Hello, everybody. Welcome to our Get Oiling Weekly Work Session. Today, Ashley and Greg are both gone today. So we are joined by Julie and Colin. And then we also have the special guest speaker today. So if you do, but before I introduce her, I would like to remind you to, if you have any questions, please put them in the Q and A. Colin will be and Julie, we will all be working through those as we go along here today. But anyways, so yeah, so if you were here, I don't know, probably about a month or so ago, we had the lovely Tiffany Armstrong with us and we have her again today. Tiffany, welcome to today's weekly work session.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me back. I appreciate it. And I am going to be focusing on all things automation, because there are so many things that we are doing manually in our businesses that take time away from us doing the things that actually produce income in our, in our businesses. And a lot of times we're just getting distracted by all the manual stuff. And not only is a track all one piece of that, but I'm going to also show you some different forms of automation that you could do and incorporate into your trackball, which is my favorite thing in the whole wide world. So I just want to say hi to Alison and Donna. I see some of you on there. So any questions you have, put them in the chat. I am watching and, and these lovely teammates of mine will keep me abreast of that. So I'm going to be sharing a slideshow and I have a very nice special surprise for all of you today, which is fun, because that's what it's all about, right? So one thing, if you know anything about me, I always start with maybe five minutes of a little mindset piece, because 80% of the success of a business falls on the psychology of the owner. So I always mix in a quick mindset piece to my lessons and I'll introduce who I am in just a second. But we're going to be talking about food and mood just really quickly. I'll take five minutes and dig into that and then I'm going to get into all things automation. Okay. And I have it very streamlined for you today. And then I have a little surprise for all of you, because I created a very simple landing page for you to all go in and grab these slides, if you'd like to see these slides. And then also any of the resources that I'm teaching you today. I'm not going to get super deep in the weeds of exactly click here and do all that and actually go into the tutorials. But I have all those tutorials on this landing page for you. So if there's any of these automation tools and software is that feel right to you, just know that I have a landing page for you to just click on and you don't have to exchange anything for me. It is just yours for the taking. So, so first of all, my name's Tiffany Armstrong and I'm an international business consultant. I actually own three businesses in my home. One is a self-defense business. I've been teaching self-defense for about 23 years now. After I survived from my own attack, and so I went and created an online course and all that. My whole business for the last many years was in all these different platforms. And I actually ended up pulling it into a track well, because it's the best thing I've ever seen. So I'm also a business consultant. So this is what I teach, exactly what I'm going into with you today. And then I also do some online selling, like Amazon selling and things like that. So that's just kind of where I come from and in my, my background. So let's just get into food and mood. I, it is amazing how much, how many little sneaky ways we sabotage our own businesses. There it is, our brains are so sneaky. So sometimes, let me just give you an example, is I had a woman who was just starting to launch into her, like her business was launched, but she was starting to finally get momentum. And all of a sudden, she just started doing all these little, itty bitty little things, like she would spend hours creating a graphic. And then she'd put it out there and get a couple likes. Or she, you know, she was just sabotaging herself. But one of the things she was doing is every time she just about got to that success point where she was like, oh my gosh, I'm about to start making $10,000 a month and plus. She would start eating bad, badly. And it was really fascinating when she started eating badly. All of a sudden she had headaches and she didn't feel good. And she would sabotage for a matter of a week or two. And all of a sudden she'd lose that momentum and then she had to rebuild it. And right when she hit that kind of ceiling where she was getting uncomfortable, she would sabotage and food was her way of doing that. And one of the mindset lessons I teach all the time is our money story, our beliefs around money. And I'm just going to mention that very quickly, but I'm an open book. I will share everything about my whole history and all my, all, I'm just, any questions you have about that kind of stuff, I'm open. But let me just pull the chat open. So thank you so much. The landing page, yes, absolutely. I'm here for you guys. So with regards to the money story, for example, just really quickly, because we need to understand why we sabotage, right? So a lot of times we have these interesting fears around money or some interesting money beliefs in mind really quickly are that my parents divorced when I was five and they didn't care for each other, right? I lived with my mom who was very, very, we lived in my mom's friend's basement. She was bankrupt, all this kind of stuff. And then my dad is this multimillionaire over here, totally separate lives. I spent most of my time with my mom growing up. And if my mom didn't care for my dad, so what did she tell me all the time? Because she was in a tough spot for herself is people who make a lot of money are pretentious jerks. They're jerks and they're selfish and all this kind of stuff. Well, me being a people pleaser back then, I did not want to make a lot of money. This was all subconscious, but I would sabotage my own finances, because I was scared to make a lot of money, because I didn't want people to not like me. That was just my money belief growing up. And the thing is, good people with good money do good things, right? So food is one of the weird little sneaky ways we can tend to sabotage our business. And so I just want to mention this, because a lot of times we don't realize we're doing it. When we eat foods, obviously that don't, I'm not a nutritionist. I have a little bit of that background, but I'm just saying in general, when we eat foods, it's going to shift, sometimes that they shift our mood and our energy. And I remember one time, I'm just going to tell you two really quick stories and then I'll wrap this up and get into the automation piece. But one time I actually, I'll start with hot tamales. I was sitting there working and I started eating hot tamales, those little red candies. Apparently my body does not like cinnamon and red dye. I didn't know that. But I'm sitting here working very productively and all of a sudden I started eating these hot tamales, because my boyfriend brought those home for me. And all of a sudden halfway through the box, because when I eat candy, I go all the way in. So when I was eating these hot tamales, I got about halfway and all of a sudden I started having brain fog. And I started doing that whole thing where you're staring at your computer and I'm not getting anywhere. And I'm just like, what am I supposed to be working on right now? And I just started getting that intense brain fog and it was a big swing in a very short amount of time. And after I finished that whole dang box, my whole mood shifted. I did not want to work for the rest of the day. I actually got really cranky and very short tempered. And it was just this huge shift. Well, I was working, it was like nine in the morning. This is years ago, but it was nine in the morning. My whole rest of my day was completely sabotaged because of the food I chose to put in my body. And I didn't realize that. So I started keeping a food and mood journal where I was, I would, just for one week, I would write down the food. And then 20 minutes later, I would say how it made me feel. And over time, over years of doing this, I have realized there are certain foods that I put in my body that my body just hates and it goes into sabotage mode. But what I found was when I started to reach some of that success, all of a sudden that would trim a fear, a subconscious fear would come up and I would start putting bad food in my body. So I just want to bring that up. Chinese food, for whatever reason dives me into the deepest depression and like complete apathy. I had no idea that that's what was causing it until I did like a science experiment on myself. I felt like in a very happy mood and went and ate Chinese food, no alcohol involved. And my mood just dipped really quickly. And I thought to myself, well, what happened here? And so the next weekend I went back out and got that same Chinese food to see, did it have that effect on my mood? And it sure did. And so now I've never touched Chinese food since, because for whatever reason, my body doesn't like it. So I just want to draw your attention to the little sneaky ways we will start to sabotage ourselves in business. Because those are, those are big, this is where we put a ceiling over our own heads, right? So we need to break that ceiling, understand that good people with good money do good things and do all the things to set our businesses up in a smooth automated way. And that's why I bring this mindset piece up with the automation. Because a lot of times we want to stay busy and we're busy with all the wrong things. But sneakily, that's actually a form of sabotage with our business. So the more we actually, Alison says, bummer, I love Chinese food. But it is, and all of our bodies respond differently to different foods, right? So it's just getting to know what does this to you. But a lot of times we're sabotaging our businesses by not automating, right? And so we're going to get into these automation tools. I do suggest you keep a food journal. That's pretty much what this is. Okay. So we're going to get into the automation toolbox. And I always challenge you to make sure if any of these automation tools don't feel right to you, just double check, is it a form of self sabotage? That you're like, nope, I just, I don't want to automate, because that means I'm going to have to get out there. And what if I get out there and do all my stuff and put my, my offers out there and nobody buys? And then you have that failure. That could be one of the things that goes through our head. So just keep in touch with your mindset around your business and all that good stuff. Okay? So let's move on. So with automation, I always say nothing is ever a one size fits all. So as I go through these tools, if they don't apply to you, just know that I have another tool I'm about to mention. So you can just kind of bless and release it and we'll move on. Okay? So just take in what you can and apply what you, what makes sense for you. Okay? So we're going to get into that. So a couple of things is why do we automate in the first place? What's the point of it? I have had people question like when you use Calendly as an automated calendar link. I've had some people say it feels so impersonal to say, here, you know, you want to spend time with me. We'll hop on, hop on my link. And there's been actually some funny little things about automation and how it feels like it pulls your personal connection with people. I'm 100% don't agree with that, because when I am very streamlined in my businesses, I get to spend more time loving on my clients. I just spend so much more time connecting. I don't mind taking a phone call here and there, like on weekends even. I'm just very open to that, because I'm not stressed about the rest of my business. I'm not like, oh my gosh, I have to go do all my bookkeeping and all this and all that, right? So anytime you can streamline and automate, this is when we free up our time to do the things that make money in our business and that love on your clients or whatever you call them, patients, whatever it is in your, in your business. Okay? And also, if you happen to have a team, so a lot of times it's network marketing. A lot of times if you have a team, the more automated you are, here's the thing is, if you are constantly on your phone till 10:00 at night and all this kind of stuff, your team in your downline is never going to think like, I can do that. I can duplicate what she's doing. If you're successful and you're just running all over the place and nothing's automated, your team is not going to see that as duplicatable. So anything you can automate and streamline and still be able to breathe in life, it's going to allow them to feel the same, right? And then all of a sudden your team starts to thrive in a different way. Okay? Again, it frees up time for income producing activities, because a lot of times we're busy, but we're busy with the wrong things, the things that don't make a difference in our business. Obviously you're less stressed if you're, and you're going to be more productive. It also adds clarity to your daily work strategy, because you know exactly what you're supposed to be focusing on, right? And then also you look at automation as if you're hiring an assistant, right? I've considered hiring, I have in the past had a virtual assistant, but I got so, I used to work 120 hours a week with one business. I was so stressed. It affected my mental health. It was awful. Now I own three international businesses and I don't work any more than about 50 hours a week at the most. And so I'm just a lot more streamlined, but I go deep and I go quick with things, because I don't have all these other to-do lists swirling around my head. It makes me so much more efficient and productive. So that is that. So big picture, let's just say we're with a track well, if you're with, this is also get oiling. So just so you know, if I say attract well, get oiling is the young living version of attract well. Okay. So it's exactly the same thing. So what I mean here is get oiling for you. Okay? So a couple of little different things, I'm going to give three different automation examples. And I'm going to show you how we're using these tools over here in each. Okay? And then I'm going to teach you about the tools. So first of all, let's say you have an attract well landing page or a get oiling landing page. Okay? And somebody purchases something off of there, right? Well, do you want to say, oh, like you're in the middle of the night and somebody purchases something? The first thing you have to do is wake up and respond with an email and do all this kind of stuff, right? It's so frustrating for the people that are like, did my order go through? And there's just a lot of challenges. So that's what get oiling and attract will set up to do, right? But what we can do is, let's just say after somebody purchases, they're going to land on the thank you page, right? That's an automated thing within get oiling and attract well. But we can, let's just say they get an automated email and that has your calendar link to book their onboarding call, if that's something that you do. It also says, okay, here's your step one, book your onboarding call. Step two, fill out this questionnaire, this onboarding questionnaire, this intake form. If you're working with patients, you know, all those kinds of things. So you can do a Google form and they fill that out and you have all the information you need upfront, right? And then let's say you need to explain a process, maybe they need to download an app or maybe they need to sign into their back office or whatever it may be. You can use Loom and add a video to that email explaining exactly how to do that. And you're visually showing them, I'll show that to you. Okay? So don't worry if you don't know what these things are yet, because I'm going to talk about it. And then let's just say, let's just say that the organization part, I use Trello to organize my task management system. There's a whole bunch of different ways to use Trello. Some people use other task management systems. Trello happens to be my favorite and I'll show that to you. But even if you're not, even if you have your own task management system and I'm going to show you some things in Trello today, just apply this to your task management system, right? Apply these same concepts. Okay? And then you use Google Drive, maybe we use Google Drive to organize our clients or organize our patients or organize anything we need. And so I'm going to show you all that and how it all fits together. Okay? Then the next one is, let's say you're building a course and I'm just going to, on the next slide, I'm going to talk about network marketing as well. Maybe you want to do an onboarding course for every single time you take on a new team member. And you, everything you repeat, anything you repeat on a regular basis can be recorded and put in a track or get oiling as an onboarding course, if you will. So I'll talk about that in a second. And so with building a course, let's say we use those same tools, right? You might use Trello to map your course, which is exactly what I do. I like, what is the category that I want to have? And then what are all those individual videos I want to do? And then do I want to have a worksheet attached in there? So that's how I organize my entire courses. I kind of do my big brainstorming mapping and maybe even a little bit of scripting in each. So I'll show you a physical, what that looks like. Okay? Then you, I use Loom to record my course, which I'll show you. And then let's say halfway through your course, you want to either do an upsell, like saying, hey, do you need any private support? Like one of the things I do is an on-demand program, it's a 12-week level of program for business owners. And one of the things is halfway through, I'll say, hey, do you need any private support as well? You can click my calendar link here and it's a paid calendar link. So anybody hopping on my calendar who's like, I just am not figuring out how to build this landing page. I just need a little support with my copywriting, whatever it is. They can click my button right in the middle of my course and get on my calendar and I can support them where they're feeling stuck, right? And then Google Drive, I organize everything, all my, all my online course resources there. And then same thing with your thinking about this for network marketing with get oiling or any network marketing company. This is onboarding your team members, right? So you take on a new team member and it's like, oh my gosh, I took on, you know, three team members this month and I have to spend all this time onboarding them. The biggest, one of the biggest challenges I hear within network marketing and direct sales companies, and I work with a lot of them, is the fact that people get so excited when they start and then it's like they're drinking from a fire hose and they don't even know how to start incrementally in a streamlined way, because the person who's onboarding them is like, hey, go to that Facebook group to grab this, go to that Facebook group to grab this, and then you log into here to get this. And it is all over the place. This is a one-stop shop and get oiling or attract where where you can house your onboarding system with all your resources in one, one place. That's why I love it so much. I've moved all my businesses over to attract while I'm getting oiling. So, so that's it. Okay? So those are just some examples. Let me know if you have any questions. What do you mean by building a course? So Alison, that's a great question. So when it comes to building, some people will create online courses. So for example, I have some online self-defense courses or for my business, I have online business courses, right? So people can go to my attract one purchase a course from me. So that could be that. Sometimes you do a free course. So let's say somebody hires you to do something, right? Like consult them, for example, or teach them something. So maybe you're a coach. And what can happen is I can walk them through and have some sessions with them. But then I use my course to say, okay, before our next session, watch videos one through three. So that is freeing up your time to say things that you say to everybody. Anything you repeat on a regular basis can be turned into an online course, whether it's paid or free. Does that make sense? And let me know if that makes sense. And then also for network marketing, then you can record videos showing, hey, this is how you log into your back office. Here's the document that you need to get paid. So fill out this document. And then here's how you get started with social media, that kind of stuff. So I'll give you Alison, I'll give you all some more examples as we go. And then by the end, just let me know if you have any questions. Okay? And I'm always available for questions outside of the presentation too. So if you ever have anything you need support with, I have a trap line, get oilings back with that kind of stuff. Okay? So, and then just keep in mind, all of this stuff can be used individually. So picture this, let's just say, you know what, I'm going to, I'll come back to that. So let me just show you this page I created for you. And there's no login or anything. It's just a page. So you can just grab this. But TiffanyCoaching.net/automation. So if you grab that, I'll just put that in the chat real quick for you guys. But this is where I'm just going to show you this really quickly. So just ignore all the weeks, but when you get down to week seven, this is what I'm going through with you, is this automation toolbox. So you will have access to these slides that I'm showing. Okay? So if you need to refresh yourself on anything. And then all of the tools that I'm going to show you today, these are tutorials on how to use them, how to create a Google form, how to add Loom, which I'll tell you exactly what that is in a second. How to use Trello, lots of different ways to use Trello or in general task, task management systems. So if you use some sort of a CRM task management system, just apply these concepts, even if it's not Trello. Okay? And then I let you swipe my Trello boards. So any, if you do have Trello, you can log, I just click on these. It'll open right up to my Trello board and then I show you exactly how to copy them and put them into your own system. Okay? So it's nice and simple and straightforward. My goal is, this is exactly what I do, is be streamlined with all of this stuff, right? I'm efficient and this is all automated for you. So it's simple for you as well, right? I want to make your life easier. So that's all in here and then organizing with Google Drive. These are just trainings I've done over time and let me just give them to you. Okay? So just so you know, that's there. And Alison, the Trello video is awesome. I'm telling you, there's so many ways, I'm going to show you a couple of ways I use it today, okay? For business and even in my personal life. All right. I keep, I run all three of my businesses and my personal life through Trello. That's just what I use for me, because it works for my brain. So I'll show it to you. All right. So let's start with Loom. What the heck is Loom anyway? So I'm going to give you some examples of what this actually, how you could use this, especially network marketing and coaches, all those kinds of stuff, anything. I worked with a lot of healthcare practitioners. They use this as well for their patients to teach their patients things. Very fascinating. So this is how you record your desktop. All right. So like, for example, when I'm on this page here, you see how I'm recording on this video. I'm recording my desktop. I actually used Loom to record. And so I'm going to show you exactly how this works. Okay? So you can create onboarding training. So let's just say you're, you know, in the network marketing arena and you have your team right below or in your downline. And you want to share something visually with them. Instead of typing out a whole email or trying to do a video of you talking, you could, you could literally click this. I'm going to show you this. So can you see this little blue circle up here that has kind of spikes to it? That's Loom. So it's an extension you add to your browser. And then I'll show you this. I'm going to click on it and my Loom is going to pop up. Okay, I can have my face down here on the left, because I'm on camera and it won't allow it. And it's going to come up with an error message in a second, but I just Xed out of that. If I don't want to show my face, which I hardly ever do, that's saying I can't use my video, because I'm on Zoom right now. So my picture will pop up. And then I make sure my microphone, do you see this little jumpy blue line over here? I say test, test, test. And I get that line to jump to make sure it's going to record my voice. And then I start recording. So I just hit record right here. Okay? And you're going to see a countdown. Actually, I have to choose my, what screen I'm going to share, right? Is it one tab or the whole screen? So I'm going to click share and now it's going to give me a countdown and it's going to start recording here in a second. So I'm going to say, hey, team, we are talking all about Loom today. Let me show you exactly how this works, blah, 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 right? And then when I hit stop down here, move the zoom stuff, when I hit stop, what happens is it jumps over to a page, it jumps into my Loom. And the best part is once this pops up here, my internet's going a little bit slow. But once this pops up, all you have to do is copy the link to the video that's about to pop up. Okay. So this is going, you just hit play here. And all I do is once this all set, I'm just going to hit this copy link button right here. And I send people the link. So imagine this, let's say you're network marketing and you have a list of things you repeat to every single team member that comes on, every single team member. So it's like how to use the back office, where the Facebook groups are, where to find certain things, right? Imagine this, you take on a new, a new team member or a new customer even, if they're having a hard time logging into their back office. And you can save all of the links of any video trainings you create. So you just have a link, 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 and you just save all these looms. And then anytime somebody on your team is like, how do I log into this or where do I find this? Whatever, you just copy the link and send it versus having to get on a call with them and, and being there present with them, which is fine too. Sometimes you need that face-to-face interaction, but anything that's repeated, you don't want to have to be spending all your time and energy answering all these questions when it is they copy a link and paste it. It's so much easier. So let's see, can I, can a Loom video link be uploaded into the get oiling vault? Absolutely. So here's the cool part. Let's just say, I love that question. So you see these three dots over here. Okay? What I could do is I download, this is still processing, but in about probably 30 seconds, this will be highlighted. But I could download it, upload it to either YouTube or Vimeo. And then you take that Vimeo link and you put it into your, your get oiling vault. And yes, it does work with a Mac computer. Okay? The only thing, and the one thing I mentioned is you do have to have Chrome. That's the only limitation of Loom is you have to have a Chrome browser to make it work. But that is on both PC and Mac. Okay? So that is good. So sorry if I missed this. How is this different than Vimeo and Zoom? So for Zoom, you have to actually set up a meeting, right? You have to go into Zoom and set up a meeting and you can record it. But this is so, this is so quick. Let's just say I wanted to show you something right now. I would click this link, hit record, record it and send you the link. It's super, super quick. With Zoom, you have to set up the meeting. You have to log into the meeting and be on it. Do, do your thing, right? Do your recording and then you have to wait for the Zoom to process and then you can do it. So it's a lot more, a lot more steps with doing it through Zoom. Okay? And I know if you're a safari girl, I love it that you're bringing this up. If you're a safari girl, that is perfectly fine, just for the point of recording certain things, just pin Chrome to your, just download Chrome. It's no big deal. And then you add Zoom and then, or I'm sorry, Loom, and then you can record. Okay? So we can, we can play with that. Yes, you can even use those. That's exactly right. You can even use those looms in saved replies on get oiling. You know, all those things. There's so many ways you can use it. So I'll get more in depth as we go, but just wanted to give you an idea of what Loom is. There's so many ways to use it. A lot of times I'm going back and forth. And like when I create landing pages for my clients, for example, I'll create a Loom really quick and say, okay, here's the whole landing page. Here's what I was thinking for this. I send it over and then they give me a Loom back saying, okay, I love this. Can you shift this? And they're visually showing me what they want. And it's so much easier that way. So for your get oiling team, it's so easy. Somebody's like, how do I log into my back office? This is how you do it, da, 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 da. And you send them the link and then they're visually seeing you do it. It's a video tutorial. So it's, it's absolutely beautiful. Okay? So getting back to the slides. It will link up here. Okay? So the next one, yeah, anything you repeat on a regular basis can be recorded on Loom and saved. Okay? And then you have your Loom library, by the way, every Loom I've ever done, I just click over here. And I, I can go through all of the, I legitimately record probably about 10 looms a day for all my clients and all my different businesses. But when I'm showing something like this as a get oiling, right? This is a get oiling example of a page that one of you really liked. And so I, I sent a Loom about it, saying, oh, I love this. What do you like about this? And that kind of stuff. So it's a really nice, simple communication tool. Okay? So that is that. So moving on, I can answer any more questions about Loom. But I'm going to move on just so we can get through everything. Okay? So like I said, it only works on Chrome. We already got that. All right. So next, and like I said, the tutorials right on that landing page. So go look on how to add that extension. Okay? The next Calendly, do any of you, can you just mention in the chat? Do any of you have, let me just think here. Do any of you have an automated calendar link? Or are you still doing the whole? And this is okay, no judgment, but a lot of you are. So, but there are certain people that get stuck with the fact of, hey, does next Thursday work for you? And then you have to wait for the reply, wait for the reply, all that kind of stuff. And then you finally get it and somebody stole that spot, right? That happened to me the other day, just because I was trying to enter somebody manually. And I said, can I, can you work, will it work for you at 11 o'clock next Monday morning? And by the time they came around, that spot was taken by one of my clients. And so I thought, okay, that's, that's exactly the pain of it, right? And so I want you to think of using an automated calendar system as two things. All right? One is it frees up your time and it helps the whole process be way more streamlined. Number two is there's actually a sales piece to Calendly. And let me just give you an example. Okay? When I do discovery calls with my clients, for example, they fill out a discovery call. While the questions I ask on there are very intentional, because I want to know everything I need to know about this person. So when we're on that 30-minute call, we can hit the ground running. But also, let's just say, I say, tell me what you'd like to focus on in this meeting. And then it's open and then that's perfect. That's a wonderful question to ask. But could you see the difference if I said, what types of things in your business are you feeling the most challenged with? And I have a checklist where they, they can check all that apply. And I would say challenges with your branding, challenges with dialing in your offers, challenging, da, da, da. So that person who is jumping on this discovery call with me, they're like, oh gosh, I didn't know she did branding. Oh my gosh, yes, I do need, I do need to understand. they're like, oh gosh, I didn't know she did branding. Oh my gosh, yes, I do need, I do need to understand conversion copyrighting. Oh, I didn't know she did this. So all of these types of things, it's kind of planting the seeds of what I'm capable of helping them with, right? And so you can really dial in the, like, let's say you're jumping on the discovery call for a potential new person to join your Young Living business, right? So let's just say you're jumping on that. What kind of questions could you ask so you really understand what this person is passionate about? And then also help them to understand how you can support them by asking very unique questions, right? So it's very, very, it's powerful, okay? And then keeping in mind, let's say that somebody purchases something or, you know, a new pro or a new brand partner joins your team. You can send them your calendar link and say, hey, let's hop on an onboarding call, like that kind of stuff, right? So I love that you, a lot of you are using them, some of you aren't, and that's a, that's a perfectly okay thing. I cannot recommend it enough. Calendly is one of my favorites. There's Acuity, there's Schedule Once. I've used Schedule Once. It is extremely robust. There's so much setup with that. So I'm just a big fan of the simplicity of it all. Calendly is free. I think it's free for up to maybe two or three event types. I'm not sure. So I do a discovery call, is an event type, and then like a client session, like a ninety-minute session would be, I ask different questions, right? And then that's a different event type kind of thing. So just so you know, and we can look at that. Again, I'm not going to get super deep into the tutorial of it, but I will show you Calendly. But I just want you to know that I do have the tutorial here. It's ten minutes. Side note, if you don't like to take time to watch videos, you can double the speed on this. I always say you can speed up anything. So if you are a quick, efficient person like me, I'm always speeding up things. I listen to audiobooks on double speed. So anyways, but just so you know, the tutorials here, but let me just show you a simple. I will always show you my backend stuff because that's how we learn the best. So, yes, Allison, I love double speed too. I'm telling you, everybody sounds like chipmunks. Listening to them, even when I watch my own videos back, I double speed and I'm like, I kind of like my voice that best. I, I definitely, my whole family roots are in Texas. I grew up in Chicago, but man, my family talks very slowly in the South. So it's very slow. So it's like, for example, with Attract Well and Get Oiling, we do custom website builds, right? If you're having a hard time really understanding how to build your own website kind of thing. So let's just say you saw this booking page and you just get this link, you just send somebody the link and then they can click in here. And then you can just click and find the times that work, right? So that's one. And then let me just show you like my discovery call, just so you can kind of see how these work. So if I were to view the booking page here, and then you'll see that I have very strategic questions that I ask. So by the time somebody is on here, it's, hey, what kind of business do you run? What are your current sales and number of clients? Where do you want to be with your business? What have you already tried that's not working? This gives me so much information. So then when I hop on the call, this is not like, oh, I'm going to pigeonhole somebody into a sale. It's not like that. I genuinely come from the service heart and so does Get Oiling and Attract Well, those whole teams, why I love them so much. But this helps me to hop on a call and not waste their time, not waste my time. And there's a goal they're trying to reach. And by asking the right questions, you get right down to the nuggets of it all, right? It's so powerful. And so let's see, since you run multiple businesses, how do you set up parameters and build? Yeah. It doesn't now get confusing. That's a really good question. So Rebecca was asking, since I run multiple businesses, how do you set up parameters in Calendly? For available hours, does that get confusing? What I love about Calendly is you can do an overall, if I get up to the top here, you can set your overall availability, right, for all of your event types. Each of these down here is an event type, okay? Or like within here, for example. So if I go to edit, for my consulting ones, right? Couple of real quick things. And again, I showed this in the tutorial, but let me just show you this real quick, okay? So first of all, it can integrate with Zoom. So you just go up here to integrations and you add Zoom, okay? And then what you want to do is when it says location, I just do this dropdown and I select Zoom. And now it's connected to my Zoom. So every time somebody books a call with me, an automatic Zoom link gets created. I don't have to do anything. Alright, I just wake up and think, oh, I have this call. I get to ask, see all the questions. And then every part of it is efficient. And they get auto reminders. It's just beautiful. And then when you come down here, this is where you can, Rebecca, this is where you were asking about setting this. So you get to say, okay, how far out can they book? If you're in a sales process with somebody, like a relationship sales, you know, process, maybe you don't want to have this as six months out because they might lose interest, right? You might want to shorten that a little bit. So you catch them while they're excited, right? And where that needs the most powerful, you set how long that is for and then you can set custom hours. So here's what I do. This is how my life is set up. These are when I see my clients. And then I work, I build landing pages, like Get Oiling and Attract Well landing pages for people. And then I see my own clients and things like that. And so I, I always mark Tuesdays and Thursdays off so I can actually get that work done, right? Because otherwise I'd be stressing. I'd see people back to back all day. And then all of a sudden, the next day I'd see more back to, when am I going to actually work on things, right? So it is very important for me to time block time. And then I get to manually, if somebody's like, I can only do it on Tuesdays. Like we worked with somebody recently with a Get Oiling who wanted some support. And Julie had reached out to me and said she can, she's only available on Tuesdays. And so then we did a manual addition to her on a Tuesday, right? So it doesn't mean you can't do this, but that's kind of my general parameter. So I can get my work done, right? And to have everybody happy. You can also set, like, I don't want any surprises. Like I don't want to wake up the next day and be like, oh my gosh, in three hours I have to, you know, have this call. So I always set a two-day timeframe. So there's no surprises, all my projects and I, I'm very structured in my days. And so I, nobody can schedule within a two-day period with me, okay? So that's that. And then you get to set the time zone for yourself and all that kind of stuff, okay? So that is the general gist of Calendly. And then one more piece of it. Go down here, let me just save. And then this is where you get to ask the question. So this is my client. This is absolutely like after I started working with somebody. So I don't have a load of questions that they need to answer every time because I already know exactly what they need. I just always want to know, is there something specific you want to focus on extra this session, okay? But typically, once I'm working with somebody, I know exactly what the next step is for us. But once in a while, I read one of these and think, oh, we need to take a different direction than I was planning. And then I'm prepared for my call with my client, right? We never want to waste time with that kind of stuff. So that is my favorite. Let's see, and then when you come in here, I'm just going to tell you really quickly, I always click on two things, account settings, okay? And I go in and you can do your branding here. You can change what your link says right here. You can upload your own logo, your photo, all that kind of stuff, right? Nice and simple. But the other thing that's very, very important to do, and this is my most common question I get on Calendly, is that we want to check for conflicts. So how funny that these are all of my calendar accounts, right? All my different email accounts that I have because I segment my businesses, right? So I always want to make sure that if I set a doctor's appointment or if I set, actually, I hardly ever go to the doctor because I use so many, you know, oils. So there you go. But that's a funny example. But if I have a dinner I'm going to or just anything, right? Like I'm volunteering in an event, I'm starting tomorrow through the weekend. I went and marked it off my calendar. So when somebody clicks on my calendar link to schedule, it's going to mark all, it's going to check all of these calendars to make sure there's no conflicts, okay? So you see how it says check for conflicts on these. But anybody who schedules with me, I want it to add to this calendar. Does that make sense? So you just want to make sure because all people are always saying, what if, what if I'm not available in my calendar? But somebody wants to book at that time, how does Calendly know? This is how it knows. It checks for conflicts, okay? So I am a huge fan of it. And then what I do is I save my calendar links. So if somebody's like, hey, I need to set up a call with you, I just say, okay, here you go. I just opened up Calendly. I copy the link to whatever the proper thing is. Like people hire me as speakers all the time. I have a speaking inquiry, right? That's a different one. Are you looking for virtual? Are you looking for in-person? Are you not sure yet? Can you tell me all the details about your event? You ask different questions, right? So if somebody has a speaking inquiry, and question, like they want to maybe hire me, I copy this link and I put it over there. But guess what else I do? This is the nice thing. Let me just go here. All these websites are done in Attract Well slash Get Oiling, kind of same thing here. So if they want to hire me to speak right here, this is the link. And guess what? It opens right up to my calendar for my speaking inquiry. Right? It's so simple to do. So there's lots of different ways to do this. Like you could, if you're with Get Oiling, for example, you could put a tab at the top of your Get Oiling site and say, you know, interested in joining the team? Book a call with me, you know, that kind of thing. And then you ask a whole bunch of qualifying questions on that. So there's lots of different ways to do that, okay? You want to be cognizant of your time and make sure that you're not having, you know, fifty people like, oh, you know, I want to jump on her schedule, that kind of thing. You know, you can't give away your time. You have to make sure that you're asking pre-qualifying questions. And once in a while, somebody will jump on my calendar and start filling out the questions. And then they see that, oh my goodness, this is, this is more than I'm ready for kind of thing. I'm not in the place for this yet. And they pre-qualify themselves out, which is a beautiful thing because the people I work with, I'm very picky on who I work with for clients because our missions have to be aligned. And if my questions are kind of pre-qualifying them out, it's a beautiful thing. Bless and release, they just weren't right for me. And I wasn't right for them. And it's a perfect thing, right? So all that kind of stuff. Rebecca, does your tutorial go over coaching sessions only on certain days and the limit of number of per day? Yes, I believe I do. I do. And Rebecca, if you have any questions on this stuff and I, if you watch my tutorial and I don't mention that, reach out to me and I'll walk you through it, okay? It's no big deal. Actually, I could do a Loom and answer your question and just shoot you a link. That's exactly how I would handle that, just so you know, you see how automated I am, right? So that's that. So getting back over, that was my deep dive on Calendly. And that's exactly what I wanted to go over there, okay? So again, just showing you that this Calendly tutorial is right here. And then Calendly.com is right here where you can sign up for a free. It's not just a free trial. It actually is free unless you start building more event types. Obviously, I pay for Calendly because I have event types coming up the wazoo, but my, my businesses are so segmented that I use Calendly for all three businesses and it works really well for me, okay? So, moving on, I love these questions. Keep them coming, okay? Google Forms, another, this is beautiful for customers. It's beautiful for clients and coaching clients. And it's beautiful for when you're onboarding a new brand team, a brand member, okay? And Google Forms are a form of an online questionnaire. And I'm going to show you a, Allison, her head's spinning. You're welcome. I'm here for you. This is a lot. Speaking of drinking from a fire hose, right? This is exactly why I put my slides on here for you. So you can revisit this, okay? And you know, you'll have this recording as well. So the next piece is, Google Forms is, it's an online questionnaire. So let me just give you a couple of examples of how we can use these. One is, let me just show you here, just go here. So when I onboard a new client, like a brand new client, and they say, yes, Tip, I want to work with you. What I do is, let me get to one. So for example, this is what I send them. It's a fix, I'm about three minutes, but this helps me to understand two things. What are their biggest business challenges? Where's their, you know, goals, all this kind of stuff? How would they rate themselves on certain things, like where they want to be in life? If they say a six? Hey, if it's not already a ten, what would improve that? I know exactly what is driving these people, right? What means the most to them? And then I know how to nurture them as a consultant because I know exactly what's going to help them. And my last question is always my favorite. Our second to last, what are the top three things you'd like to accomplish in our coaching sessions that would have you feel like this was worth you investing in yourself? This is, you could do this for your new brand partners. Just an example, let's just say a new person, a new person comes on, right? You want to know a lot of things, like how do you like to be acknowledged, right? Some people like gift cards. Some people like a handwritten note. Some people like a free product. Some people like public acknowledgement. Wouldn't that be so nice to understand the psychology of your team members coming on? So you know exactly how to love on them and how they, are they visual learners? Do they like to be shown stuff? Do they like to hear stuff? What helps them feel, you know, supported? How do they like to be supported? Do they like a, a call once a week? These are things that you can ask your new team members coming on. And believe me when I say that they will feel supported, right? You can even throw a Loom recordings in here saying, hey, watch this Loom and then answer these questions. Watch this Loom and then answer these questions. You can, there, all of these platforms marry so beautifully. And then my foundation is Get Oiling or Attract Well, right? That's the foundation. And then everything I create pulls into it. That's why I love it so much. Okay, so just think about, there's lots of different ways. And then this is the coolest part. You know what? I'm going to show you a little back piece, okay? Replays are gold. Let me just show you something very interesting, okay? So I'm working with a, a different direct sales company right now and going through a twelve-week level-up program with them. So let me just show you one thing I do with a whole bunch of forms, okay? So they have twelve weeks of super simple Google Form homework that they need to do, okay? So let me go in here. Get on my backend, but I will always show you all this stuff. Replays are my jam. I love that. Okay, so I'm taking this company through twelve weeks of training, right? And so each week, they, I have a Google Form for them to fill out, alright? But how do I track this? Because there are hundreds of people filling out this each week, alright? So here's the cool part. Let me just show you one little trick to a Google Form. Go to Settings, I'm so sorry, Responses. Go to Responses and you click this little green button here. That will automatically create, oops, I'm sharing some emails and I don't mean to be, so let me get out of that. I'm sorry, I'm very private about my clients, but, so let's say you click that little green button, it auto creates a Google sheet, basically an Excel spreadsheet in the Google Drive. And what happens, and I'm going to show this to you, so all these twelve weeks, show you this, all of their answers get put on this. And I'm going to show you this very quickly. All of these answers get put on here and you'll see the twelve weeks at the bottom here pop up, okay? All these twelve weeks pop up and every single time they fill out Google Form, it auto puts their answers into the spreadsheet. So you can see, you don't have to look through each of their questionnaires. You look at one spreadsheet and you're like, oh, here's all their answers in one nice free notice, okay? So I do have a tutorial on that as well, okay? Creating a Google Form. It's pretty simple and straightforward, okay? So it shows you how you can go here. Let me just go back to the questions. So if I want to add a question here, you just click the plus. And you can type the question. You can make it a short answer, like if it's just their name. You can do a paragraph if it's a little bit longer answer. Multiple choice, right? So they can only choose one of the radio dials. If you do a checkbox, you can do multiple. You say check all that apply, right? You can do a linear scale, saying on a scale of one to ten or one to five. Where do you rank yourself, right? And then the next question, say, why do you rank yourself there? That kind of stuff, right? And so there's a lot of different things we can do here. And it's very simplistic. And then all you do is you click Send. You grab the link, you can shorten the link if you want to. You copy that and that's what you send to people. So for example, if I paste that right here, you're going to see this is the link I send my clients to get their onboarding questionnaire done, okay? So now I just want to show you something, just again, to come back to the big picture, is when we're thinking about, I was on slide twenty-seven. So when we're thinking about this, for example, let's say somebody purchases something from you and you send that one email to Get Oiling, right? You can have your Calendly link there. You can say, here's your first three steps. Your first three steps. And you can do a button in the email, for example. Step one, schedule your onboarding session. There's a button there and that button gets linked to your calendar, right? Your Calendly link. Then you can have step number two, fill out this onboarding questionnaire. It should take you three minutes. I always tell people about how long it's going to take them. So they know it's not like a forty-five minute thing, right? And it'll take you, fill out this three-minute questionnaire. So I, so, and that, that's all I say. I don't even explain. And then I put a little button in the, the Get Oiling email and that button goes off to my Google Form. I would just copy this link, right? So that goes off to the Google Form. And then let's say you needed to explain something visually, like, hey, I need you to download Telegram or download Voxer or download whatever. You know, if you had something, download this, an app for Get Oiling, anything like that, right? You can do a Loom to explain it. And then you grab the link in the Loom. And in the email, you do a button and link it to that button. And now they have access to that Loom. Does that make sense? Does that feel like it is streamlining some things? That's how we start to have all these work together really well, okay? So that's some of the automation. And I'm telling you, there are so many ways. I record. So that's some of the automation and I'm telling you, there are so many ways. I recorded my entire on demand course when I go through this stuff. I recorded all of that through Loom. So I, Loom and I'm like, okay, here's exactly like some of these tutorial videos. Are part of my online courses, right? So that's, that's where it's like, okay, this, this can start to come together for you. So some of it can be, I record looms to put into a course to have people purchase. The other way I use Loom is if one of my clients is like, oh, my gosh, how do I, how do I log into this? I'm, I'm doing this and I just don't know how. I'll be like, oh, okay, here's how you do it. You go here, click here, do that, that, that. And I, it's a one minute really quick process for me. I send them over to the, the link and you know, I email them or send it to the messenger where, wherever I'm communicating with them. They watch it and they're like, oh, thanks. And then they go do it. It's like quick on the moment tutorials. However. Every time somebody, this is a little tip. Every single time that somebody says, hey, how do I, how do I create a Google Form? Actually, all of these, just so you know. Somebody said, how do I use Calendly? So instead of me saying, hey, Sharon, here's how you use Calendly, da, da, da. I'm like, you know what? If she has that question, other people have that question. So I will very rarely address the person by name. If I'm doing kind of a tutorial style thing, if it's a video that I'm going to in the future be able to say, somebody else is going to want to ask that same question. So I'll say, all right, we're going over Calendly. Here's how it works that are about, and I will do it as a tutorial video. And then I uploaded that tutorial video into Vimeo and now it's in my attractable system slash Get Oilin, right? So. Camilla, that is, it's all new to you. Yes, this is automation and it is at our fingertips. Here's the best part. Let me just say this really quickly. Loom is free. It cuts you off at five minutes. So I think if you pay for Loom, it's ten dollars a month. Okay? And that's for if you're going to do longer tutorials, but if, if all you need is five minute chunks. Do the free loom. It's very simple. Google Forms are free. Calendly has a free option, but if you need to add more, it's about twelve dollars a month. Okay, you have a track wall or Get Oilin, which is, let me just, let me just say this and they are not paying me to say this. Okay? Is I used to have all of my stuff in different software. I had a sales funnel system. And then I had my emails in a different platform and my online courses in a different one. And my website was housed in a different one. So I had all these different softwares. And then I had to get them to talk to one another. So I had to use a software called Zapier. Don't, don't even worry about that. But I had to bridge the gap and say, if somebody bought my course over here, they were sent this email from this software and they were added to my online course over in this software. It was a nightmare. I was paying twelve hundred dollars a month. Twelve hundred dollars a month for software. And something was always broken in the chain, right? Because something digitally always goes wrong. That is why I've moved everything over to my Get Oilin attract well systems because. It is so much less expensive and everything talks to each other. And that's the beautiful part. So now. The only outside software I use are these. Right? That's the only outside software and I pull it into my Get Oilin and Attract Well. Okay? So you can kind of see how this all works, right? Trello is free. If you start adding a whole bunch of team members to Trello, it, it increases, but it's very inexpensive. It's very inexpensive. I think like. Twelve or thirteen bucks, I think. But there's a free version of Trello and then Google Drive is free. So all of this total over here probably adds up to thirty bucks a month. You know, it's very, i- if you even have the paid options, all of this can be free though. Okay? And then you just have your Get Oilin subscription, which is, believe me when I say it is so worth it if you know how to use it right. Okay, and if you ever need support. Really helping dial in your Get Oilin, just know that Get Oilin, the team. Helps you with that. They will support you one on one to get that done. So if you are feeling stuck anywhere on this kind of stuff. Reach out to them and we'll get you on a, a call and we'll figure out exactly what you need to do. To drive your business and to create all this automation because you have this amazing technology at your fingertips. It's just a matter of understanding it enough to use it properly. And all of a sudden. You know, eighty hour work week turns into thirty hours because it's like you hire a virtual assistant because it's all doing it for you. It's so amazing. Okay, so let's move on. I'm just going to show you a couple more real quick things and we'll wrap it up. Trello, I just, I'm just going to show you this. And again, I have a very in-depth tutorial here for you. And when I say in-depth, let me just see how long it is. It's about forty minutes. Again, you can watch it on double speed. But I just want you to see a couple of things when you click on these boards. Okay? So I'm going to open these boards and I'm just going to show you really quickly how we can. These are wonderful for network marketing teams, by the way. Okay, so let me just rapid fire go through this here. Well, I'm going to give that a second to open, but. Okay, so let's say, some people like pen and paper. To brain dump all their tasks and organize. They like pen and paper. Some people like it digitally. So sometimes what I'll do. Is I'll come in here and I'm like, okay, for business, what are all the things I need to do? So right here, I need to call Sharon. And then I need to blah, 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 right? So I brain dump all that. And then what do I, all the things I need to do personally? And then I prioritize them. These are drag and drop. So let me just write another one. These are drag and drop. You can just organize them. But then I'm like, okay, so every, every Friday I do a big brain dump of everything I need to do. And then I'm like, okay, what is a good day for me to call Sharon? So I think Tuesday is a good day for that. And okay, this I'm going to do on Wednesday. And then all of a sudden you sort of lay out your week. And then I have my things I do daily. So I just have a list of things that I actually do every single morning. I check my Trello board. I reach out to my clients to see where they're at, all that kind of stuff, right? So and then to delete, we just go to archive. Side note, nothing is ever lost in Trello. If you delete something, you can just go to the archive and find it. Okay? So that's one way to use it as a task management system. I love brain dumping. Here's how I do my social media because I can plan. In one day, I could plan three months of social media and have it running on autopilot in one day. So I'm like, okay, what kind of personal stories do I want to share to help people understand who I am and, and connect with me, right? What kind of expert tips do I have? What kind of like, let me think about some behind the scenes stuff I can do. What kind of sales post do I want to do? So I sit here and I go through my expert tips and I'll say, okay. Four right turns. This is what I'll do. If anybody's following you ever, it's my self-defense stuff. If anybody's ever following you and you feel like, are they following me in my, a car? You make four right turns because if they're still behind you, they are following you, right? That kind of stuff. So that's a, that's a post turn of itself. So I would brain dump all these posts. And the next thing I do is I go right into Canva. I have one template and I boop. Write that tip and then write the tip on the next one and I duplicate, duplicate, duplicate. All of a sudden I have fifteen graphics. For my social media posts and I, it takes me maybe fifteen minutes to do that, right? So it's just amazing. So. As far as a taskmaster for Rebecca, so I actually still use Get Oilin, the Get Oilin side of things. For my CRM to communicate with my clients and all that kind of stuff. So I use that and I also use it for to do's. Because it sends me reminders. I also, I use Trello. It mixes really, really well with Get Oilin's. With what the capability within Get Oilin is, which is robust and amazing. And then I use. Trello for other things. Okay, so that's a great question. And all of our brains work differently than one another. So it's just a matter of figuring out what. What, how our brains work the best, right? So I do a lot of CRM stuff within my attractable and get oiling systems. Okay? So that is that. This is great for network marketing. So let's say you are, you are a team leader, right, in your brand partner. And you want to maybe lead your team and give them resources that are super simple. So maybe you say. You're, you create a whole bunch of looms. Right? You create a whole bunch of looms of tutorials for your new team members. And you say, okay, here's your tutorials and you just paste the link, paste the link, paste the link, paste the link. And you tell them, okay. I'm going to invite you to my Trello board and I want you to go through the first three videos here. And then you're working Loom and your Trello, right? Does that make sense? If you have a Google Drive folder that you house all of your social media graphics that your team can use. You grab that Google Drive link and you put it in here. Team Google Drive holder. Does that make sense? And then they can come into this one Trello board, click it and go off to grab whatever resources you have there, right? So that is that. Okay, and then. And Trello is interesting, easy to set up, but let me just tell you again, let's say, let me just tell you this. Go to trello.com and make sure you sign up for a free account. Okay? It will say, hey, do you want to sign up for this business or do a free trial? It's not a free trial. It's actually free. Okay? Then once you're logged into your Trello, come to my board here, my landing page and just open this. And I show you exactly how to copy my boards. So all these boards I'm showing you right now. They're yours. You just, you just have to have a Trello account to do it. So then you click on this. Let me just show you this real quick. You click on one of these boards. I'll just show you real fast. You just go over to, let me get rid of that. You go to show menu. You click this little back button because for someone's net just causes that. And then you click more. And copy the board. And once you copy the board and you, you name it, whatever you want to name it. Now it's in your Trello system. I have no access to it. It's yours to take. Okay? I set these boards as public so you can steal them. Okay? So again, I'm not going to get too much more detailed about Trello, but I just want you to know that you have all the boards. This is this forty minute training is, is me going more deep into this, like how I use it for social media, how I use it for task management, how I keep track of birthdays. In my family. You can set little due dates. So I always remember the week before, like, oop, I've got to get a gift out and, and text that person, that kind of thing. Okay? So that kind of stuff. All right. And then the last little piece here, and I am going a little bit fast on this, but just so you know, that tutorial is there. So. Don't let that deter you from feeling like, oh, I didn't get enough information on that. I'm just giving you a good big overview here today. So then Trello board, yep. So then the very last thing, you can swipe my boards. So the very last thing is Google Drive. And again, I'm just going to keep drawing you over here, but. Organizing your business with Google Drive. This is a seventeen minute tutorial. Again, you can speed it up. But just so you know, that's there. I just wanted to at least introduce you to these topics today, but with Google Drive, this is where I organize everything. Okay, so like, let's just say, just show you here. Okay, so like this is just an example of how you can organize your Google Drive. So first of all. There's two ways you can get to your drive. You either go to your URL and you type in drive.google.com. Or. You can click on these nine dots over here. And that will open this up and then you can click on the drive right there. See that? Sorry, the drive right here. Okay? So that's how you get to your Google Drive. And then let's say you're onboarding new members or you want to create social media either for yourself or your team, right? All that kind of stuff is right here, on team testimonials. You can just organize anything. I do legal documents. When I do speaking events, I have my speaking agreement and like all that super organized. For my speaking events, for example, I'll say speaking events. And then each speaking event has its own folder. And in each folder, I upload the speaking agreement. I upload any social media I've done to promote that. Everything is housed in that one event. And then the pictures that get taken at that event, they upload all those into that one folder. So I always know where they are. It's a beautiful way to stay efficient. Okay? Then let's just say you wanted to share this one folder with your team. Maybe this, maybe your social media folder. You right click. You share. You make sure anybody with the link can access it on your team. So I, I say. Anyone with the link. I copy it and then I would go to my team folder. I think that's one, my master. Yeah, if your team is joining this Trello board. Then I just paste that Google Drive folder link right here and that's it. And now they have access to that folder. Okay, so I am going very fast. I know this is a lot of information to take in. But I wanted to give you a very general overview. I wanted to give you a very general overview so you know that first of all, this stuff exists. Okay, and second of all, if you want a deeper dive on any of these that makes sense for you. This is where you can go on the deeper dive. Okay? On the landing page. And then here, let's see. Oh, I always just say collect customer. That's my last one. And this is my joke, but what do we do with all of our free time? What are you going to do with your free time once you have everything automated? So I like gifts. I'm a giftaholic. So is everybody in Get Oilin. But anyways. And so with that. What, Google Drive, sorry, Joni, that is in the cloud. Yep. So if you just go to, as long as you're. In your browser, you just type in drive.google.com and all of a sudden your drive will pop up. Okay? It's on my backend, so I'm not going to show that too much to you. But you just type in drive.google.com and it will, it will open up for you. And then. You go from there. Let me stop sharing so we can look at the chat. So yes, it's all in the cloud. That's the beautiful part is. Let's just say you're in the drive. The Google Drive is like the big main folder. It's almost like Microsoft Office. And then you have Microsoft Word, spreadsheets like Excel, and then you have the Google Forms, right? So if you want to, you can go into the drive. Let me just show you one thing real quick. If I type in drive.google.com and then I click new, I could create a new Google Doc, like a Word document. I could create. A slideshow, although I do mine in Canva usually. I could do Google Forms, spreadsheets, all that kind of stuff. It's all available to you right there. And then the coolest part. This is a problem oftentimes. Let's say you do a, a Word document and you're starting to do a Word document and you're editing it. And then you, and it's not in the cloud. Then you email it to somebody and they make changes to it. Who has the latest version? There's two different versions now sitting out there. It's not live. When you use the drive to create these. You and I could be on the same document at the same time typing, like I see you, you know, but we could be typing together as a team. And no matter what, the latest updates are there for you. So whenever you open up that document because it's an in the cloud document, now it's live. So you don't have all these random, lots of different versions of stuff being out there that's not updated, right? So. This is a lot, but I, you know, just to give you that little final overview, we have, let me just give you that little wrap up kind of. So it feels good to leave like this. So you can see now. How these all fit together. So I'm going to come back to that original examples. So. Anything to do with emails, you can send these, right? You found me, link your Google Form, your looms, Trello and Google Drive. These were the main things that we talked about today. And then you have your Get Oilin. And everything I have pulls back to the Get Oilin piece of things, right? So that is it in a nutshell. Thank you for all your questions, first of all. And I know that was a lot, but. This is where you can, and just so you know, all of the people in Get Oilin, the whole team, they know this stuff. They know. This type of automation like the back of their hand. This is why they started with what they, Julie specifically and Colin, they're like. They're my techie people, right? So I know this stuff, but when I have a tech question about Get Oilin, I'm like, Julie, it's Colin, I need help. And they're the ones helping me. So you have this team backing you through and through and to support you to help your business, business thrive. Because that's what it's all about. So we can have freedom in our lives and impact people and just do good things with our money. So that is it. Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you Tiffany for coming on today. And if anybody else has any other questions or even on the replay. Go ahead and email us. As well and, and we can help answer your questions. I don't think that there was anything else.
I just put the link again to the landing page in there because somebody had asked for it. So I just popped that link. Right there, but yeah, it's Tiffany Armstrong forward slash automation. Tiffany Armstrong, oh my gosh, TiffanyArmstrong.net. I left the net out there. And forward slash. Okay, I'll paste that again. Sorry, Amanda, go ahead.
All right, well, we want to thank everybody for coming on today and we will see you next week.
That sounds good. Alison, it's in the, it's in the chat for you, just so you know. Okay, you're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Bye. Thanks, everybody.